For June 8, 2022, we'll begin by having the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please join me. Ms. Lawrence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So call.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
How's it?
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Goodness. All right. Our next order of business is public communication. The City Council welcomes participation in its meeting. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. Item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council, which are not posted on the agenda. Public criticism of the City Council, commissions, boards, and agencies is not prohibited, and the City Council cannot take action. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us on an item that is not on the agenda?
Hi, this is Jeremiah Dawson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. The floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. I was just brought to my attention through somebody through the Adventist Health Blue Zones that there's been a tobacco retail license ordinance revamp that you guys have been looking at but haven't enacted, and I just wanted to support that as a parent and as a doctor in the community, that I think there is definitely some harm to allowing advertising of flavored vaping substances and cigarettes. There's some pretty compelling evidence put out by the Blue Zones folks about a local survey done here showing 24% of 7th graders not thinking there's any harm from vaping, up to, you know, 42% of 11th graders having tried it. And coincidentally, I just got an email about a recent survey published in JAMA of 1,100 kids, teens 12 to 17, who had increased smoking frequency and eventual dependency just from smoking menthol cigarettes instead of regular cigarettes. And so I think, you know, trying to restrict that and stopping new smokers would just tend to help the community and help those people in the long term. Pretty much all I have to say, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Dawson.
All right.
Unfortunately, we can't comment on items that are not on the publicized agenda, but I appreciate your comments and taking the time this evening to share those with us. You're also, anybody is welcome to follow up with the council members individually. If you want to send us an email, we're always happy to meet with you and discuss anything that concerns our community. Is there anybody else from, yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else from the community that would like to address us on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, I don't see anything in the chat, and I don't hear any callers, so I'm going to move on to the next order of business. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hang on, can you back up? I just want to second what, can you hear me?
Are you, is this Williams here?
Yes. Yeah, hi.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to second that, that I came on this call about the Blue Zone and about the tobacco retail licensing, and I just wanted to bring up the tobacco companies back. Both of my parents had COPD problems from smoking. My mother started smoking when she was about 16, and my dad started smoking when he was 18, and he was in the military. They sent K rations over to feed the soldiers, which included cigarettes. And tobacco companies did a great job of getting all the GIs hooked on tobacco, and they were, it was everywhere. I mean, when, when they sent the Army soldiers back to the States, they distributed them through camps, and the camps were named after cigarettes. It was Lucky Strike, Winston, so it was everywhere. And we can see how everybody got addicted and what happened. Now it's taken a different tone, but perhaps even more important because they're targeting kids earlier. And nicotine definitely has an effect on a developing brain, so I just wanted to add that to what the doctor said. I think he said it very well, but it seems to be a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Mr. Pierce? Anybody else from the public? Okay, with that, I'll close the public communications and move on to a public matter, which is the presentation of our proclamation designating Western Ware Days, June 17 to July 4. With that, I believe, do we have Alexis England with us?
Yeah, hi, this is Alexis England, and on behalf of, excuse me, the Board of Directors of Willett's Frontier Days, we accept this proclamation and hope everybody has a happy and safe 4th of July and enjoys Frontier Days this year.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and briefly just read our proclamation that we have here. Willett's Frontier Days is the oldest continuous rodeo in the state of California, and this year's theme, Western Heritage, marks the 95th anniversary of Willett's Frontier Days, which still continues to draw people from all over to come and not only celebrate Independence Day, but to celebrate our community. Each year, this event is run solely by volunteers, which makes, with many hours dedicated to putting together this traditional event, and this annual community event instills great pride in all of us who call Willett's home, past and present. So now, therefore, we declare and proclaim the Willett City Council designating Willett's Frontier Days 96th anniversary. We've got 95 and 96. I believe it's 96th anniversary, June 17 through July 4. Is it in fact 96?
95, yes, sir.
95, okay. We've got a typo, we'll make sure that's corrected. And again, thank you to all the volunteers who worked really hard on a day when many of us get to enjoy and relax. You're out there working hard, the planning beforehand, the day of, and then the cleanup afterward, so our appreciation.
Yes, thank you, we appreciate it.
Do you want to, for those of us that might be listening, is there a place where we can get tickets or any special events you want us to know about, or a website to go to to get the list of Frontier Day events?
Our event schedules you can find on our website at willettfrontierdays.com. We only have one sweetheart contestant this year, Danielle Berry, so she'll be selling pre-sale tickets. We will be selling tickets at the door this year, like last year, we had to just do pre-sale. No special quote-unquote events this year, just the same thing we do, have been doing for like the last 10 years with the truck pulls the week before, and then the past 95 years with the rodeo on July 3rd and 4th. So we hope to see you down there, and I know some of the City Council volunteers and helps us out at the gate or at the back, at the vacuator, just doing anything, and we really appreciate people coming to help support the organization because we need a lot of volunteers the days of the rodeos, so we look forward to seeing all of you and definitely look forward to putting some of you to work.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. England.
Thank you.
All right, enactment of ordinances, we have number four this evening. On the consent calendar, we have the City Council minutes of May 26. We have a resolution ratifying extending for additional 30 days the virtual City Council and Commission and Committee pursuant to AB 361. We have a resolution calling for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on November 8, 2022, and consolidate request the county clerk to conduct said election with the statewide general election. And then lastly, a resolution authorizing Willett's Frontier Day parade route for July 4 and the decorations on the PG&E utility pole. Do we have any questions from council? If not, we can, oh, go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hey, I got ahold of Dolores earlier about one change. Councilmember Connie wasn't here at my last meeting, and she says she pressed that, so I remember that. I would like to make a motion to set the consent calendar.
I second it, Larry.
All right, we have a motion and a second with an amendment. Anybody from the public want to address the council on this consent calendar? All right, having heard none, any further comment from council? I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, moving on to item six, monthly activity reports. In the packet is the business license activity for May 2022. Any comments or questions? Nope. Anybody from the public want to comment on it? Having heard none, we'll move on to commissions, agencies, and authorities. We have no business before us as that planning body. The city manager, Brian Bender, has a verbal report for us. I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's keep it short tonight. I just wanted to inform the public on the status of the City Hall renovations. We're in the midst of it. We're about halfway through or maybe a little bit past our project schedule. It's really taking shape. I do appreciate the patience of the public as they've been venturing into City Hall over the last couple, last week or two, and experiencing a little disorientation with where to go to seek certain staff members or conduct City Hall business. We're accommodating them to our best of our ability. Once again, I appreciate their cooperation through this. It's still going to be a little rough for the next week or two or three, once we, the contractors are not going to be here this weekend, knowing that there's a couple of events going to be set aside for the community center and City Hall. We just couldn't overlap, they couldn't safely stage their materials and equipment in the open space as well and keep it secure, so. Once again, I do also want to acknowledge the efforts of staff in working in the construction zone. It's nice having, well, the windows you see behind me are kind of boarded up, we did that for the events coming up, but we get a lot of positive comments about the new openness of City Hall, and the public is looking forward to come back and when the service counters are fully functional, so just wanted to pass that along, and if there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, I don't see any questions.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and, thank you. Looks great over there. All right, department recommendations. Item 9A is a discussion and possible action, adopting a resolution establishing the city's 2022-23 project list for the local streets and roads program, referred to as SB 1 funding requirements. Our presenting staff member will be project manager Andrea Trincatos Slater.
Good evening, this is Andrea Trincatos Slater, project manager. I am presenting a resolution establishing the city's fiscal year 22-23 project list for the local streets and roads program, which provides funding from the SB 1 gas tax. The city has received funding from this program since fiscal year 2017-2018 for local road repairs. This funding has been primarily applied towards the annual strip striding program, although it has also been used to pay for the replacement of some survey gear, some survey equipment. Estimates for fiscal year 22-23 project the city to receive about $104,000 this coming year. The program requires the city to adopt an annual project list by resolution, submit annual expenditure reports, and meet the maintenance of effort or MOE requirements. The city would need to spend a minimum of $291,500 on street maintenance from the general fund in order to meet its maintenance of effort, and it is anticipated that at some point, the state may reduce the city's funding from this program because the maintenance of effort has not been met for many years. That said, the project list for the, for fiscal year 22-23 is proposed to be the annual traffic striding program, survey equipment, maintenance, and replacement, project management software and field tablet, and traffic safety equipment such as cones, delineators, and signs. Staff is seeking approval of the resolution adopting the fiscal year 22-23 project list, and I'm available for questions.
All right, council members, do you have any questions? All right, having heard none, we're all pretty familiar with SB 1 funding and the improvements that it helps support making our community. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address us on this matter? Having heard none, I'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion.
I still move the motion. Larry.
Gonzalez, seconds.
All right, we have a motion and a second, thank you, and I will call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, our next order of business is discussion and possible action, authorizing advertisement for bids for the groundwater resiliency improvement project, phase one, and our presenting staff member will be city engineer Wilburn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Rod Wilburn, city engineer. Preface this with if I lose my voice, I'm coming off a little illness. Andrea's on standby to take over. This discussion, possible action, authorizing advertisement of phase one of the groundwater resiliency project. We've prepared plans and specifications for the installation of just over 3,500 feet of new HDPE, 10-inch HDPE pipe, and 55 feet of 8-inch PVC 2900 pipe that will be replacing the existing 6-inch Schedule 40 PVC that's in place, primarily what's referenced as the Long 20 property just north of the enhancement lines. There are some ancillary gate valve and some other, some other pertinent structures that will be, that will be installed, or fittings is a better term, along the way. The method of installation is horizontal drilling, which is intended to avoid any impacts to Baker's Metaphone. After some deliberation through the environmental review process, it was determined that limiting the excavation and limiting the truck traffic was, was the best way to do this, and this is what we're considering the first, first phase of two for the project. We got some estimates for the 250,000 gallon chlorine contact tank, and it was about a million dollars, which is significantly higher than we anticipated, so we're proposing to put that part of the project off until next year, when supply hopefully catches up with demand and pricing gets a little more, a little more reasonable. The estimate, the engineer's estimate for this phase of the project is $561,275, which is slightly more than the grant amount, which I didn't reference earlier. This is the grant portion of the groundwater project, but anything in addition to or over that $551,156 of grant funding will come out of the Water Enterprise Fund. So the recommendation here is to improve the, improve the authorization advertised for bids that this phase of the project. I'm available for questions. That's, that's really a simple, simple portion of the project.
All right, I'll bring it back to council. I know there's been need this tank, but I also think that it's wise to hold off on it considering that costs have gone up so much to purchase it. Anybody else from council have questions? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Rod, do you anticipate any change orders in this first phase? Anything come to mind, or is it straightforward?
Um, I, I don't, well, I shouldn't say. I don't expect much, much in the way of change orders. With directional drilling, limiting our, our surface impacts, I expect it to go rather That's, that's my expectation, so. Prices are pretty, prices are pretty hard to predict right now, so, so our estimate is, I think, a little bit conservative, so I, our, our hope is that the grant will cover the entirety of this phase of the project. Cross fingers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public want to address us on this matter? Having heard none, I'll bring it back to the council and entertain a motion.
This is Larry, I still move. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
No.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, I know we're moving quickly this evening, but I know that many of us council members meet regularly with city staff and have the opportunity to ask lots of questions, so before we come before you, we've had an opportunity to fully educate ourselves of these issues, so just want to let those listeners know that we really have taken the time on these issues, even though the meeting's moving quickly. And our next order of business is item number 10, our department monthly report, and I'll give the floor to Kathy Moorhead in regards to the airport.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. As you can see, we've been working quite a bit with the airport. We're still working with Sylvia Tony Lance on getting the agreements ready for reach, and Mr. Smith for the new hangers that we're going to construct up there. The boys are enjoying lots of cleaning. The airport looks really good right now. It's quiet for the summer, but lots of projects in the works, so we will keep you posted as we move along. Thank you.
Thank you. Community development, Dusty Dooley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, within the department report there, we provided update on the CDBG business loan program. Because this was an April report, there certainly has been some, some progress in that program. In fact, we were able to issue three checks to local businesses earlier today, so very excited that that, that program is moving forward successful and we're able to help out some of our local businesses, and we'll certainly have a new update for you at the, at the next council meeting as well. Willet Trail Trail Project, not too much else to update there. Appreciate the council's support in adopting the environmental review document under SEQA. The CTC will be meeting at the end of June, and we anticipate receiving our design funds and moving forward with the project, so certainly lots of, lots of meetings and updates to look forward on, on that important project. Provided an update on the excise taxes that we collect from commercial cannabis businesses, and so you have those numbers there, and just want to emphasize that we are seeing a reduction in the overall excises taxes that we're collecting, and it's, just wanted to let council know that our businesses are still open, they are employing local folks. It appears that the, the main reason behind the downtick in excise taxes is the fact that the amount of money that they get for their product and services has declined due to market conditions, and as many of our, our taxes, the excise taxes on cannabis businesses are based on gross receipts, obviously, when, when they make less money, then, then we see fewer taxes. We still are seeing and processing new applications for cannabis businesses, so that's, that's certainly good news, as we continue to see a decent level of assessment in that sector in our community, so hopefully we'll, we'll start moving those numbers again in a positive direction, but today, the city has collected over a million dollars in excise taxes since we started the program back in 2019, and I wanted to assure the council.
We lost you for a few seconds there.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you dropped off when you said you wanted to assure the council.
Was that on the cannabis or on the Caltrans?
On the cannabis.
So I, so what I, I think what I ended on was that we received over a million dollars in excise taxes since the program started, the cannabis program started in 2019, and we're continuing to see new businesses apply for permits in the city, so hopefully we will see an uptick in those excise taxes moving forward. And then, I'm going to check in again, can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can still hear you. Do you have any updates on the, anything else for us?
No, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Quick question for you about some of the activity that was taking place across from the hospital in front of Microphore, there was some controlled traffic out there not too long ago. Is that related to the Conservation Corps, Rails to Trails? A few people asked me about that.
I'm not aware of what that was about. Maybe one of my colleagues can answer that question, but I'm not sure. If staff's not aware, we can certainly find out and report back to council.
This is Jeremy. That's a PG&E boring project. There's, there's two PG&E encroachment permits there, and then the CCC is scheduled to start their work soon, but that's not what's going on right now, that's a PG&E project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, thank you for your report. Moving on, both engineering and utilities, I hear from Scott Herman.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members. The few updates I do have, I would like to say that last year, at the end of May, the reservoirs were at 86%. They're currently at 100%, thanks to these late rains. And on the SCADA system, I know it's been on there for a while. We're waiting for the backward computers at the water plant. We have received the computers and our SCADA integrator is working to complete the upgrade. One more thing on the electric gate at the wastewater drain plant. At the last minute, the vendor backed out, so we are looking for a new vendor to do the install. And that's all I have.
Hi, thank you.
Can I jump real quick and just take this opportunity to let everyone know that the construction on Blosser is scheduled to start next week on Monday? So there's gonna be traffic control on Blosser Lane pretty much starting Monday through mid-August. They'll be keeping at least the lane open for the entire project, except maybe when we pave, we may have to close the road, but we'll figure that out as it gets closer and we'll give everyone plenty of notice. But I did want to let everybody know that's starting and it's gonna be, you know, there will be traffic control and active construction going on there.
Thank you, Jeremy, for reminding us of those dates in the construction over on Blosser Lane. Just a quick thought, I know that the school district is closed for the summer and they use one facility during the summertime to offer their food program and especially during COVID times that we're still in, a lot of families are utilizing the summer food program. And I believe that Blosser, last I heard, that was still the location for pickup. So it might be worth reminding them that we've got construction beginning and I was hoping they would pick an alternative school to offer their food program because I don't want families not to have access to food due to, you know, any kind of construction constraint. Maybe just reaching out, reminding them if you haven't already, you may have already done that.
Yeah, we have. I didn't, they didn't mention anything about that, I'm not sure. But there will be access for sure. But yeah, we have been talking to them. We've talked to the kids' club. They're aware, we're working with them.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, thank you. I know that's a big project and I appreciate all the work and effort that's gone into starting that project. We're all excited about it.
Yeah, me too.
Long time coming. All right, the police department, Chief Lizaraga.
Madam Mayor, I was hoping that Chief Lizaraga would be participating. I did receive a text message from him slightly before the meeting stating that he's on a transport duty in Ukiah and he got held up and he was hoping to be back. Appears that he's not.
No worries. We know that our chief is ever-present in the community. I was complimenting him for the numerous people from the community who stated that they've seen him out on the streets patrolling and actively trying to show his presence and listening to people and keeping us safe. So we just appreciate all that he does and there's a report from him enclosed in the packet. And with that, I'll move on to the public works department, Cannon O'Shea.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I don't want to give up all my information for May, but we're about a month behind, so I figured I'd just give a few updates and share some things we've been up to. We've been busy with water system repairs, the weed abatement's pretty ongoing this time of year. All the late-season rain we've been blessed with has really kind of got the grass growing out of control, so we've been trying to keep on top of that. We're keeping the parks and athletic fields maintained as usage increases for the season, preparing town for upcoming events and assisting with the renovations at City Hall. The city received some donations to help us out this year. We got a nice load of redwood chips from Willet's Redwood here in town and California Tree Solutions that's doing a lot of tree work here in the community has also donated a few loads. And Cold Creek Compost came to us with a load of about 30 yards of compost to be distributed to the community, so we made that available. And that was only out for a few days, so it was used well and quick. And Scott Herman and Dreia Trincato brought forward a fence at the new athletic fields. So we removed the ranch fence that was existing and we put up a nice green powder-coated fence. So I encourage you, if you haven't made it down there, to check it out. And we're also really pleased with the product that was provided by Lennox Fenton. And I just wanted to remind everybody, there's the graduation procession tomorrow, approximately 6:00 PM, and that will impact traffic at various locations as they bring the graduates, you know, through town, down memory lane, through the schools that they all grew up in. So just encourage everybody to be patient while the procession is in place. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, Cannon, thank you. And yes, the professional thing, I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions for Cannon. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Greta.
Yes.
Cannon, this is Greta. I have two questions from community members. The first one is wondering if the tree that was removed from the Wood Street parking lot last year will be replaced?
Well, it was, the determination with our best guess is that when the charging station was put in, it was in the wrong location, given where the utilities were brought in. So we may have to explore the option of putting one in a separate location that is a little more suitable. But I'm definitely open to the idea and I know that we have some more trees available through our grants and we're looking for some locations, so that wouldn't be a bad place to try to put one in there somewhere to make up for the loss, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other question was, is the city, is there any date or plan to tackle the roadside weed trimming on the city's portion of Sherwood Road? The county has done their part and it's put our section in contrast.
I would agree. Unfortunately, our, we have a piece of equipment that's down for repair right now and once we get that back up, yeah, that's first on the list. That's really the only piece of equipment that the city owns and we're having a hard time finding like a rental or a replacement because products are in such high demand right now. We did look around and we tried to, we tried to source someone to get us caught out, but that's definitely first on our list. We have a few locations that have gotten a little overgrown on us the last few weeks, but we're just trying to kind of fit them in when we can. So I'll keep on top of that for sure.
Has there ever been any thought to trying to work with the county so that they could tackle that small bit while they're doing the rest of Sherwood Road?
We've discussed it. They were kind enough to stripe it for us last year. We didn't want to hand them for too many favors, but we could probably work something out. I'll have to talk to Ken Stanley and see if there's a way we can maybe negotiate some sort of contract fee or something that they'd be willing to take a favor on somewhere else that we can help them out with and we can make it happen.
Got it. Thank you. I know some residents on Bitten Bender are always worried about that grassy area, so it would put them, you know, at ease to know that that was being tackled early on. Thank you, appreciate your answers.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Connie. And then I'll move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I sat in on LAFCO the other day and budget passed. That was probably the biggest thing, so that's all I have to report.
Councilmember Stransky?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Connie?
Thank you. Yes, I attended the MCAG meeting on Monday. The big news was adopting the annual overall work program as well as adopting the budget. The board also unanimously directed the MCAG director to write a letter in opposition to Assembly Bill 2237, which would essentially make transportation funds from the state less flexible to be used particularly by rural communities. And apparently, it is a position that has been taken by CalCOG as well. So it looks like we have a lot of support and I actually followed up and called the assembly member who sponsored the bill, she's out of Burbank, and talked to a staffer of hers who is working on a revision of the bill. So hopefully, later this summer, there will be some good news for MCAG and small communities like ours.
Thank you for your advocacy, Greta. That's wonderful. I serve on Mendocino Transit Authority Board and participated in the Far North Transit Symposium and had the opportunity to network and meet with other staff members and people from Caltrans and State and discuss zero emissions and hydro buses and electric buses and ride on them and just talk about advancing technology that's easier for all riders and removing barriers for those who may have access to transportation. So it was very informative and just looking for ways to help and improve our own local I have nothing else to report beyond that. Moving on to good and welfare, we have, as was stated before, we have graduations that is taking place for high schoolers tomorrow night. It begins at 5:00 PM at the high school and will be followed by a parade that will begin at approximately 6:15 PM. It starts at high school, runs down Main Street, takes a turn to the right, heading west just after we pass over the railroad track and wraps around on Dell. The intent is for students to go past Buckle Grove Middle School and then wrap around to Blosser Lane, passing through Elementary School, and then heading across Highway 20 through the neighborhoods over towards Brookside Elementary, back towards Mendocino Avenue, and then heading east on Commercial Street until they arrive back to the high school. So just be aware of that. Feel free to stand out on senior yard and wait for those graduates who worked hard. And then this evening was the middle school graduation at 6:00 PM that has now ended. There may be some traffic at the moment. Does anybody else have any good and welfare? We have a Sober Grad also tomorrow night at the Willet's Community Center beginning 9:00 PM. I know that Councilmember Gonzalez has volunteered on Sober Grad as well. Thank you, Jerry, for your volunteerism there. We know that that's an important night in keeping our graduates safe. So, yeah, thank you. Any other good and welfare?
Madam Mayor, I just want to inject myself here. I see Chief Lizaraga has appeared. I don't know if you want to return to him to get an update?
Yes, absolutely. Before I do, Councilmember Gonzalez, you look like maybe you might want to add a comment about Sober Grad?
Yes, it culminates tomorrow night and get a lot of graduates and it's great to see their faces. It's been at 4:00 AM when they're walking away with their goodies and know that they didn't go out and get themselves in danger. I just, I love seeing their faces.
Thank you. And I think that's a good segue into Chief Lizaraga, who is also a supporter this year of hoping to finance from the police funds our Sober Grad. So thank you to you, and I'll turn that over for your monthly report.
Yeah, this is the report for May in the year-to-year comparison for April. We had less calls for service, more cases, somehow that worked out, more arrests, and almost double the number of citations. So our staff is continuing to be productive and visible and doing what they can to keep vehicle pedestrian traffic safe out of our streets. As you can tell from the report, there's some things that we're doing as far as staffing. We've got some hopeful interviews coming up this week for both of our CSO and dispatcher positions. And we're also looking at a couple of candidates for a police officer as well as one of our police sergeants. We have an applicant that's almost through backgrounds for a police officer position that we're hoping to get him through the SLAST portal, hopefully tomorrow as a matter of fact. So waiting to hear on that. That's pretty much it. Everybody's covered the procession tomorrow. We like to call it procession instead of a parade because otherwise we'd have to get all kinds of permits. So it'll be a procession for seniors throughout the town. We're gonna be facilitating that as much as far as traffic. So like Cannon said, we ask for the public and the community's support and patience as the traffic flow will be impaired for a short period of time. And also want to extend a thank you to Public Works. They've offered two other people are gonna be helping us with traffic control tomorrow as well. And we'll be visible for Sober Grad, not in, not to be intimidating or anything, but just to let the kids know that they're safe and safe environment and as well as the parents waiting at home for them. So congratulations to all the graduates and just spot it on if anybody has any questions.
All right, I don't, I don't hear any. Oh, Councilmember Stransky, did you want to comment?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, my apologies. I thought I heard something. All right, thank you, Chief, and thank you to those volunteering at the Sober Grad tomorrow evening. Council will be meeting on Monday, the 13th. We have a city budget workshop and latest word from city manager Bender is that we will have the packets, if I'm correct, we'll have the packets in hand, hard copy tomorrow for all council members to look at so that we'll be ready for the 13th. And if you have any specific questions, make sure that you reach out to staff. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, and we had, due to availability and schedules, we are gonna hold that meeting virtual. So the agenda will have the login and what's gonna be open to the public, anyone who wants to participate in the meeting virtually will have their login information. And that's correct, the document, I was just asking Kathy here, the status of Manny. Manny's been grinding late hours recently and I just want to make sure he's still upright in his chair.
I saw Manny today and he was working hard to get us that document by tomorrow morning. If for any reason, council feels like they cannot get their burning questions answered before the 13th, then be prepared, please let city manager know of a possibility that we may have to move that. Otherwise, we're expecting to have our budget meeting on the 13th. And with that, we have.
Madam Mayor, I just want to jump in here again. As we said, the plan is to get the agenda, the document out and it's gonna contain all the information. If a council member has any questions, please direct them to Manny and I either Thursday, Friday, over the weekend, we'll be available to answer them to the best of our ability and prepare you for Monday session.
All right, we have no closed session this evening.
Go ahead, I have a question. Didn't I get a call today from Dolores saying that it wasn't gonna be on Monday?
I think the idea of the call, I did not participate, but the intent was that we were confirming the meeting for Monday and if there was. were confirming the meeting for Monday and if there was a second day available to accommodate a additional meeting if we couldn't get the document out tomorrow. That's what I think the intent of that call was.
Okay, I did not understand that. I thought the question was, was there another day that I would prefer instead because it didn't look like Monday was gonna happen and was there a time that I preferred? So I guess there, I guess there was just a lot of misunderstanding.
I apologize for that, it may have been lost in translation, I apologize.
All right, so we're just, we're on for Monday.
Yes. But the grand document, that shows surpluses, so that's a good thing.
Sorry for the miscommunication, I met with City Manager Bender today and I was concerned that by getting the hard copy tomorrow, that there's a possibility that there may be council members that may have too many questions, that they don't feel that they could be ready on the 13th. So the intent was for Dolores to call, we know that you have the busier schedule and I had some availability, so to call and see if for some reason council didn't feel ready on the 13th, is there a backup date that might be available in your schedule? That was the intent, so, sorry for the miscommunication. Okay, with that, we will adjourn at 7:21 PM this evening. Thank you all and I'll see most of you next week on Monday, the 13th. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.